I'd like to call to order the County of Placer Planning Commission for Thursday, January 13th, 2022. At this time, if we would all stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, not a invisible, repeat in justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We are doing everything we can to facilitate residents staying at home and physical distancing while also encouraging the public to engage in the process. With that in mind, our public comment for the meeting will be offered in person and through a remote virtual process. Citizens who wish to comment virtually today should be prepared to comment via the Zoom platform. To join online, click on the link on the Planning Commission homepage. Please make sure your microphone is muted. You may also call in using our toll-free numbers to hear the meeting at 888-788-0099 or 877-853-5247, and please enter the webinar ID 87010872011, and please press star six to mute yourself. If you would like to make a public comment virtually, please raise your hand with your hand icon at the bottom of the page. If you're calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand. Please be prepared to speak at the time that I open the public comment for the matter's specific item you would like to address, which may include public comment for matters not included on the agenda, a consent item, or a timed item. If attending in person today, we kindly request that once you have commented on your item, return to your seat or leave the hearing room from the exit-only door to accommodate for physical distancing and allow for others to provide in-person public comment. Each commenter is entitled to three minutes of comment time. Thank you for your patience as we work to preserve the safety and health of all meeting participants and ensure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do so. At this time, if we could have the planning director's report, EJ?
No, we're going to have roll call.
Oh, we forgot roll call. Okay, sorry. Roll call, please.
Yes. Good morning. Mr. Cannon and Mr. Woodward are absent this morning, so Mr. Dematte?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Hersag?
Here.
Mr. Howgie?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, EJ?
All right. Good morning, Chairman, members of the Commission. EJ Valdi with the Planning Services Division. Happy New Year. It's our first meeting of the year. We had a busy year last year, of course. What I want to do is just start this morning by sharing some information from last year and then also give you kind of a heads up of what we might be looking at this coming year. So in 2021, we keep track of our planning applications that came in. They increased 62% over 2020. We had 515 applications in 2021 compared to 317 in 2020. That is a significant increase in land development activity. We held 22 Planning Commission meetings, which you all are so familiar with, especially that included their advisory redistricting commission meetings. And we had 13 zoning administrator parcel review committees. Those are handled by George Rososco, who's in the audience. They heard over 164 entitlement applications, and those typically are your variances, minor use permits, parcel maps, among other things. So somewhat indicative of what we have to look forward this coming year, we held 47 pre-development meetings last year. So from 2020, we had 39. So that kind of, you know, if these do turn into applications, gives us a good idea of what we're looking at going into 2022. Sue has provided you today with the SEQUA project list. I think you have a copy of that. I think she routinely sends that out to you as well. These are all projects that are currently in environmental review with the county. This list is also available online on the county's website for the general public. Right now, we have 11 active EIRs that we're working on that are being processed and about 35 environmental questionnaires being reviewed. So for this coming year, we will be processing planning and applications in six of these seven approved specific plans in the county. That's Placer Ranch, Regional University, Bickford Ranch, Riola Vineyards, Placer Vineyards, and Squaw Valley will be coming back through, hopefully. Several zoning text amendments are also underway. You know, we usually do an annual update to the zoning code, just kind of a general cleanup. We've been working on that since the middle of last year. The beekeeping ordinance, which we brought before you once before, that will be coming forward. A reasonable accommodation ordinance. And then today, we have the planning at-large commission seat zoning text amendment before you. For long-range planning, we have the housing element implementation, which is well underway. We've begun the woodland conservation ordinance update, the infill mobility study program, the regional early action planning program that just went to the board this week. That's going to be a refresh and update of the Auburn Bowman Community Plan with paying attention to the Bowman area. The Tahoe Basin Area Plan Economic Sustainability Amendments are underway. And then, most important, we hope to embark on a comprehensive update of our general plan. So a lot of projects and, you know, long-range planning efforts that staff is working on, that will be well underway this year. Any questions on that part of it?
Nope.
So let's see, recent board meetings. So like I said, last Tuesday, we did, the board did give us direction to move forward on the Auburn Bowman Community Plan Update. The board also followed the Planning Commission's recommendation and denied the appeal for the Fowler Road subdivision. Just as the commission requested, the board has interest in environmental health, exploring the use of individual water treatment systems for new subdivisions. So environmental health will be bringing this item to the commission sometime, we hope, near the end of March. On February 8th, the board will be holding an informational meeting on the housing-related code amendments. We previously took that to the board after your recommendation. They wanted more time to review the amendments. They wanted to hold a kind of like an informational item or workshop, and so we're going to do that on the 8th, and then we'll go back again probably shortly after for their consideration. And then also on February 8th, the Chance and Dean rezone, which you made a recommendation on, that will be going to the board. For Planning Commission, our next meeting is January 27th. There's several extensions of time on that. There's only two regular items, one's a road name change up in Olympic Valley, and then we also have a map modification for the Mariposa subdivision in Riola Vineyards. February 10th, that's our first meeting in February. Right now, it looks like we may cancel that meeting, so your first meeting in February may be on February 24th. So for other items, I just want to touch on Planning Commission attendance and Brown Act requirements. I mentioned this before. Planning Commissioners, you know, will need to appear in person. If not, they'll need to publicly notice the location where you are appearing from, post the agenda there, and make the location available to the public.
And how many days before the meeting do you have to post that?
There you go.
Three days.
Oh, just three? Okay.
Seventy-two hours.
Yeah, follow me along, planning, just in case I misspeak here.
Yeah, no, the only exception to that would be if there is some sort of public noticing for a hearing. We do also note that those locations and those occur 10 days in advance.
Okay.
And then the quorum of the planning commissioners must be present in locations within the boundary of the county, and then members of the public must be able to observe the meeting and offer public comment at a physical location. The county offers Zoom, and that seems to be working well. That seems to be the direction we'll be heading from here on out, so I don't foresee that going away. On a different note, for CDR's staff and ensuring COVID safety protocols are in place, in-person staff fluctuates, so there will be occasions when staff will be presenting remotely, such as today. This is not always ideal. It's always good to have staff presenting in person, and we do everything we can to make that happen, but there are some things that are out of our control, and we need to ensure the safety of not only the commissioners, the public, the staff as well. So, you know, as we go through this next wave of COVID, you know, you may see things fluctuate as we go throughout the rest of the year with meetings. And I believe that's all I have today, so unless there's any questions.
All right. Any questions in the commission?
Nope.
All right, I will now open the public comment for any matters not on the Planning Commission agenda. Is there anyone in the audience? Yes. Come on up and, yep, go up to the microphone.
Sure. My name is, good morning, happy new year. My name is Victor Beckett. I am a resident in an area called Placer, sorry, Granite Bay Island. It's an area, part of country that's between Sierra College and Old Auburn. Most of you are aware of the developments were approved there, the senior home facility, Placer Retirement Residence, was used to be called Hawthorne. It's an eight-acre, and there's other side is the park at Granite Bay. I do own four properties in this area in Placer County. I've been happily paying taxes over the last 11 years. I don't know if this makes people smile. And so two of these properties are in Old Auburn. They were, when I bought them, they were, had tentative map approved for one-acre parcels. I finished approval. That property had sewer connected to the main house. The county required me to extend the sewer to the neighbors, and I'm obliged. I spent, I extended the sewer, I connected, tied it into the manhole around 12 feet deep. I'm sorry, I'm getting you a background of where I'm going, coming at. Extended 150 feet to the neighbors' borderline on Old Auburn, dedicated to the county. Cost me around $50,000. I dedicated the county for $1. I had to do it. So this was because the other parcel had a house put in, two bedrooms, two baths. Now, I own my house on Haskell Way, sits at two acres. It's a narrow, long lot at the end of Haskell Way, and I purchased recently, last six months, the five-acre tract facing it, as you can see in page two in handouts. What I was aspiring-
You have a minute to go.
Just give me a couple more minutes. What I was aspiring to do is to combine these two acres from the tract with my property to be a square lot instead of a narrow. Did a minor lot line adjustment, then I was requested to do a soil test by environmental health. So I was asking, why would you want us to stay on septic where the big development on Placer is retirement? It's almost a scale of 100 individual single homes, and it's, it has like 144 individual units that has bathrooms in it and commercial kitchens. Why wouldn't you, and I have only three neighbors, I'm sharing 600 feet fence on the roadside with them? Why wouldn't you request them to connect sewer to the three neighbors since I had to comply owning only one, dividing into just one parcel?
Your time is up, so if you could wrap it up.
Okay, so that's the thing. I feel like it's, you know, it's double standard. I as a owner, they're trying to force me to stay on septic where the neighbor, this massive structure, commercial, it's actually the best benefit to everyone, and the county benefit and the neighbors' benefit that we had to put up with the acidic and the traffic and the noise concerns because it's an arrore area, and in return, they're not offering goodwill either. The county is not, I don't know what concession they got, how they kind of gifted them the chance not to hook sewer to us. I'm requesting a sewer connection. It's very simple and protect my investment, protect the county's interest, to be able to develop in the future. I'm sharing 600 feet with a massive commercial structure that refuses and got granted by the county not to hook sewer to the neighbors.
Okay. Your three minutes is up. We did receive your memorandum, so I believe all the commissioners have reviewed that. So at this time, we're not making any decisions or discussion, but EJ, could you kind of bring us up to date?
Yeah, I don't have the history on this particular item. What I would do is, we have your contact, Victor, and so, you know, let us look into it, and then we'll have staff get back to you.
I'll leave it with one quick note. I received this email today from Ben here from Surveyor Department.
Right, Engineering and Survey.
Bart Dickjian, and he mentioned, he put in writing that it has never been heard of to request a soil test and a minor lot line adjustment. But again, my bigger concern is that I'm requesting a sewer service. It's unfair and just to give concessions to massive commercial and to force me to do it on the retail side, and the same time, it's protect the investment for us if I wanted to sell it, develop it.
Right. So I'm, I think at this point in time, because we can't discuss this, but EJ, if you could work with him and come back-
Yeah, we have your contact information, and so I think I know enough about the issue just from your, what you've submitted and spoke today, so we'll follow up with you.
Thank you very much for listening to me and-
Well, thank you.
-for the opportunity. Appreciate it. Have a good day.
Yep. All right. We will now move on to the selection of Planning Commission officers. Would any commissioner like to make a motion to select the 2022 officers?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we elect Nathan Hersag as the chairman, Sam Cameron as a vice chair, and Anthony Dematte as the secretary.
Chair, if we could, I think for purposes of order, we should take each one of these individually.
Oh, really? Okay. Okay, so we're taking them individually, so.
Oh, okay, yeah. Well, I will make the recommendation that Nathan Hersag be our chairman next year.
All right, do you have a second?
I will second that.
All right, we have a first and a second. Sue, if you would call roll.
I had a first from Mr. Johnson, a second from Mr. Dematte, so a vote for Mr. Dematte?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Hersag?
Yes.
Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Thank you.
With the new chairman, do we change now at this point and then let Nathan take on the rest of it?
Well, let's, let's finish the voting here.
Oh, you, you-
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that we select Sam Cannon as the vice chair next year.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Johnson, a second from Mr. Dematte, so a vote for Mr. Dematte?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Hersag?
Yes.
Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for Clayton. Can we vote for ourselves?
Yeah. Yes, you are permitted to vote for yourself.
Okay.
You have to. You only have four of us here.
That's true.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we elect Anthony Dematte as the secretary for next year, 2022.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Johnson, a second from Mr. Hersag, so a vote for Mr. Dematte?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Hersag?
Yes.
Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. It's been a pleasure. I get to move. Nathan, if you want to take over?
Do I have to say your ITC? I have this in late.
You, yeah, that'll just make it easy, but next time, you'll be moved next time.
Oh, I like my spot. It's an Italian thing. I could see everybody knows.
Okay, very good. We'll continue down the agenda items. Thank you, commissioners, for entrusting this to me. Do my best. I know I'm following in some big footsteps here. Appreciate your service, Commissioner Howgie. Excellent two years of leadership, and just want to thank you and acknowledge how you led us through some really difficult times and through some really difficult topics. So thank you for your service and everyone. Just continuing on here, I think I'll just move down to the consent agenda items. Is there anyone on the commission that would like to remove any consent agenda items?
No.
Anyone from the public? Okay, seeing none, I think we are at the point of a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda item.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. I think we'll continue the roll call vote. I have some questions and thoughts about future, about consent agenda items, but let's do a roll call vote.
I didn't hear the second. I heard first from Mr. Howgie.
From myself, Anthony.
Okay, thank you. So a first from Mr. Howgie, a second from Mr. Dematte, so a vote for Mr. Dematte?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Hersag?
Yes.
Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, good. We're going to move on to our timed items. Item one, slider for 1005, PFE Ranch subdivision, tentative subdivision map and conditional use permit. We do have Angel Green, the Planning Services Division, going to present this item. Is Angel online?
Yes. Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. Good morning again. Angel Green, Senior Planner with the Planning Services Division. We'll be discussing the PFE Ranch subdivision project located in the western portion of Placer County. And I am joined today, I do see that we have Mr. Jeff Marsh with NST Engineering, the applicant who's representing the owner, KRG Investments. If we can move to the next slide. So the entitlements that we will be discussing today include a tentative subdivision map and a conditional use permit to allow for the construction of 10 single-family residential, rather, single-family residential lots. Next slide. The project site is approximately 8.7 acres in size and is located northwest, I'm sorry, the northwest corner of PFE Road and Cook Riolo Road. The site falls within the Dry Creek West Placer Community Plan area and is designated low-density residential, one to two dwelling units per acre. And the project site is zoned residential, single-family, combining agriculture, combining minimum building site of 20,000 square feet. Next slide, please. The project site borders PFE Road to the south and Cook Riolo Road to the east. Riola Park subdivision is located to the south of the project site, and you'll see here, we have Morgan Creek subdivision and Riola Greens located also north of the project site. Moving on to the next slide. The project proposes a tentative subdivision map and conditional use permit to develop the 10-lock single-family residential development. Also proposed, we have four open space lots. Lot A would consist of the open space area that would contain the open space designated areas, including a drainage swell. Lot B would be a common area lot that would include the private roadway. Lots C and D would include the two landscaped lots. Detached single-family residences would be constructed within the individual lots, ranging in size from roughly 25,000 square feet to 36,000 square feet, which would meet the minimum 20,000 square foot, minimum lot size requirement for the land use designation and zoning designation. Access to the site would be provided from a non-gated 24-foot-wide private road extending north from PFE and culminating in a cul-de-sac. All lots would be accessed from this roadway to be constructed and would not, access would not be provided directly from PFE Road to the south or Cook Riolo Road to the east. So moving on to the next slide, I'll describe the improvements that are proposed, which range of fencing types that would be installed throughout the project site, as well as landscaping that would be installed along all adjoining frontage roadways for PFE and Cook Riolo Roads. Common area perimeter lots, pedestrian areas, and entry features would also be landscaped. We have new, three new streetlights that would be constructed, one at the corner of PFE Road and Cook Riolo Road, one at the entrance of the site, as well as one within the cul-de-sac area. A six-foot-tall landscaped noise barrier wall is also proposed to be constructed along PFE Road and Cook Riolo Road. Moving on to the next slide. As I'd mentioned, access to the site would be provided from a 24-foot-wide private road extending north from PFE. A sidewalk is also proposed along the eastern side of this new road. Next slide. Improvements for Cook Riolo Road include widening along the project frontages, and we have an existing bike lane on Cook Riolo that would be removed and reconstructed as an eight-foot-wide bike trail. Next slide. The improvements for PFE Road also include widening of the road, and a new five-foot-wide sidewalk would be constructed as well. An existing sewer main which runs along PFE Road would be extended to the new road. Storm drains would also be extended as well. Next slide. A six-foot hall, I'm sorry, want to make sure I run the right slide here. Six-foot-tall landscaped noise barrier wall is also proposed to be constructed within the landscaped areas along the frontage of the site, along PFE Road, as well as the eastern boundary along Cook Riolo Road. And in order to soften the appearance of the sound wall, berms would be provided, verbiature panel, offset wall sections would be installed consisting of stone veneer and caps for each pilaster. Additional landscaping would be provided along the sound wall as well. A proposed homeowners association would maintain the sound wall. And staff is recommending conditions of approval that would ensure that the construction and design of the sound wall adheres to the Dry Creek West Placer Community Plan Design Element and general plan noise standards. The height of the wall is required to meet the height restriction of six feet, and as you can tell by the exhibit here provided in the presentation, there, I know that there's been questions in the past as it relates to the height of these walls. Walls often are constructed at a depth that essentially where the wall would exceed six feet, but at grade level and where you see visibility of the wall itself, the wall will be required to meet the six-foot requirement. And so I just wanted to point out here, as shown here on the slide, any additional area that's provided below grade that could provide for the structure of the wall, the grade level will need to be at a level that would not bring that wall going beyond or outside of what the height requirement would be. All right, moving on. I also wanted just to provide an exhibit here that shows the proposed colors and materials that would be used throughout the project site. All frontage improvements, including the final design of the sound wall, will be reviewed and approved by the Development Review Committee prior to construction. All right, next slide. All right, so as previously mentioned, the entitlements that are requested by the applicant include a tentative subdivision map and conditional use permit. This would allow for the development of the 10-lock single-family residential development. This request is consistent with zoning designation. As I've mentioned, we have a 20,000-square-foot minimum requirement for the site. All right, so moving on to our SEQUA compliance. A mitigated negative declaration has been prepared for this project. The MND was circulated for a 30-day public review period, and that period closed on November 17th. Mitigation measures for five resource areas have been incorporated into the document to reduce potentially significant impacts to a less than significant level. Next slide. I'd like to take a moment to highlight just a few of the mitigation requirements for the biological resources section. So wetlands and biological resource assessment was prepared for the project to inventory the existing biological resources on site and to analyze any potential impacts. No special status species were observed during the field reviews, and there are no records of special status species on the project site. However, to address potential impacts during construction, the developer would be required to prepare pre-construction surveys and to consult with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. A drainage swell was mapped within the southwest portion of the project site. The assess- portion of the project site. The assessment noted that there was evidence of wetland hydrology in a small area by the north end of the culvert under PFE Road. This is where the drainage first enters the property. But no indicators of wetland vegetation were present in the swell itself. The entire drainage would be located within open space lot A. And to ensure that the feature is not impacted during construction activity, such as grading and road improvements along PFE Road, as well as the driveway improvements for lot one, mitigation measures have been incorporated to require verification by the Corps of Engineers prior to construction activity and to obtain any necessary authorization or permits that would be required. Development of the site would also be required to comply with general plan policies, which require a 50-foot sensitive habitat buffer from the edge of the riparian area. Moving on to tree impacts. An arborist report was also prepared for the proposed project. Six interior live oaks and three blue oaks would be impacted. The activities associated with the development of the project site, such as grading and tree removal, are considered covered activities and require PCCP authorization. Mitigation measures have also been incorporated to require that the project comply by applying for PCCP authorization and to comply with the PCCP general conditions for water quality and habitat protection, land conversion fee obligations for temporary impacts and permanent land conversion, as well as construction worker training. And with the implementation of these mitigation measures, along with compliance with the PCCP impacts to biological resources, were determined by staff to be less than significant. Moving on. Letters were received from PG&E, Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board, and the Air Pollution Control District during the early consultation period, as well as during public review, for the mitigated negative declaration. And a copy of those letters are all provided in the staff report. I did just want to highlight that we did receive one new comment from SMUD on January 4th, which made note that gas and electric, as noted in the mitigated neg deck on page 24, should be switched to SMUD, as SMUD would be the appropriate electric company. So staff has made a note of that in the file. All right, next slide. All right, the project was presented to the Western Placer MAC as an action item on November 17. The MAC voted to recommend approval of the project with the following conditions: that the project be conditioned to not allow vlogged entrance, and second, additional information relating to drainage patterns and streetlights was also recommended to be provided to the MAC after the meeting. And in response to the feedback that was received by the MAC, a condition of approval has been incorporated to prohibit the construction of the gated entrance, as shown here. An additional information relating to the drainage of the site and location of the proposed streetlights was also sent to the MAC. All right, so with that, with the next slide. The Development Review Committee recommends that the planning commission approve the following items: to adopt the mitigated negative declaration mitigation monitoring report program, subject to the findings contained in the staff report; the PFE Ranch subdivision also, supported by the findings. I'm sorry, if I could repeat that one more time. To adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring report program that had been prepared for the PFE Ranch subdivision, supported by the findings contained in the staff report. Two, to approve the tentative subdivision map for the PFE Ranch subdivision, to allow for the subdivision of the parcel, to create ten lots, subject to the conditions of approval in Attachment D of the report, supported by the findings that are also provided. And then, third, to approve the conditional use permit that would allow for the development of the ten lot, single-family residential subdivision, also subject to the conditions of approval found in Attachment D. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that your commission might have.
Okay, thank you, Angel. Before we allow questions, I just want to make sure the public knows, you can go ahead and start to raise your hand and push star nine if you'd like to make some comment on this, which will happen after we actually talk to the applicant and have some questions. But go ahead and start queuing in for that if you're online or on the phone. I want to invite my commissioners to go ahead and ask questions. Do you have any questions for staff on this? Okay, yes, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, this is just for clarification. Could we go back to the sound wall diagram? Yeah, I guess, I guess the question is, you know, it's not often, I guess, that we see eight-foot walls. Usually they're limited to six-foot. But when I look at the diagram on the left, where it shows the side view of the wall, it shows the wall being actually six feet tall instead of eight feet tall. And so I guess I'm a little bit confused there in what the standard is for sound walls in terms of height. And is this really with a six-foot high wall with the pillars that hold it up being taller?
That would be correct. And so the, if you look closely at the exhibit, you'll see that there is an area that would be below grade that would allow for stability for the wall. And then you have the wall cap that would sit on the pilaster that may come just above the six-foot wall. And so at grade, the wall would consist of a six-foot wall, tall wall.
That's a pretty standard requirement?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
On the traffic and circulation fee, is that required to be paid at the beginning of the project or after the project is completed? It's on page seven. It would be about $52,000 to the county.
You know, I'm not, let me look at that real quick. I'm not sure what the timing is. I would need to look into that. I'm not sure if we have, we have a per-unit amount here. It might be triggered with the building permit, but I would need to confirm that.
And looking at the staff, oh, sorry, Angel, go ahead.
That's correct.
Yeah, and looking at the staff report, it appears that timing is done prior to building permit issuance.
Oh, okay. I just didn't see that. Thank you. Also, one more question I had on the parking. It's restricting residents to park in their driveway only on this. Is this because the roadway going in and out, the street is going to be too narrow to have parking on both sides? Or if people have guests over to their homes, they're not allowed to park on the street, where would they have overflow parking in this subdivision?
I wonder if Phil might be able to chime in. I see Phil, he's on the call, but he's not a panelist. Phil, do you recall, not recalling the restriction of the parking, but maybe that does have to do with the 24-foot?
It's on page.
This is Phil France. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, the parking restriction is due to the narrowness of the, of the street, only being 24 feet wide when you start to park along the street. There's not enough width for two-way traffic.
So is there going to be dedicated parking if some of these residents want to have guests to their house? Because it also says you can't park along PFE Road or Cook Riola Road.
I'll defer the number of parking spaces back to Angel on that, on what is required for the amount of parking.
My understanding is that with the two parking spaces that would be provided within the garage space and then the two within the driveway, you know, we do have some driveways that would be long enough to maybe even accommodate additional cars, that that would meet the minimum requirement that's provided or required by the ordinance.
Okay, I'm just trying to look into the future for these people who live there and want to have a party at their house and there's nowhere to park for their guests and except for their driveway. If the street's too narrow and they can't park there and it's an emergency vehicle needs to get in there, where are these people going to park? So that was it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more question.
Absolutely.
Yeah, in the past, there's been kind of an understanding that if you've got a cul-de-sac subdivision, that normally you'd be limited to eight lots without a EVA exit. And I guess that may not be a standard. I don't know. Where do we sit with regards to that? This is a ten lot subdivision that's cul-de-sac.
I'm not aware of that being a standard. I do know that we worked with our fire planner who did not make comment to the number of lots for this roadway and whether there should be a limit there. So I can't speak to any standards that we would have in place because I'm not aware of those. EJ, if you might be aware, if you could maybe chime in on that.
Angel, if I could, this is Phil France again with engineering surveying. Typically, the emergency vehicle access is required based on the length of the cul-de-sac road. So if it exceeds a certain length for a certain zoning of parcels, that is when the fire districts would usually require some sort of emergency vehicle access. And in this case, it doesn't, it doesn't meet that criteria.
Okay, thank you. That answers the question.
Did you want to add anything?
No, he spoke exactly the words I was going to share.
And actually, if I could say one more thing on the traffic fee question earlier, I was unable to chime in at that point in time. The traffic fees are paid at the time the building permits are issued, and it's paid per permit, so not all at once. That total that you read just kind of gives you an idea of how much in total the project will be paying, but it will be collected per building permit at each time that those are pulled.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are you good? Okay, well, I also want to offer an opportunity for KRG Investment to make a comment as the applicant. Is someone available to do that, or is that necessary? I can see they have their hand raised.
Yeah. Yeah, my name's Jeff Morse. I'm the project engineer, and I am representing KRG Investments. What we've tried to do is create a project in a rural setting. Granted, there's some larger subdivisions around this particular parcel that are, have smaller lot sizes. Adjacent to this particular project are some more rural building sites and existing residences. So we've tried to be sensitive to that. The project itself, I think, fits well with that rural nature. As far as the parking, the size of the lots is large enough that there can be additional parking on site. I'm sure they could have more than just the two in the garage and the two in the driveway. I would expect you may see these homes having a three-car garage. So I think we would have ample space for the visitors.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
No? No, I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. I'm going to open up for a public comment. We might have more if you guys can hold tight. So go ahead and, thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Let's go ahead and open up to public comment. Go ahead and raise your hand and push star nine if you'd like to chime in at this point.
Patrick, go ahead and lower your hand, and you will have three minutes to make your comment.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. My name's Patrick DeBert, and I own the lot on the west side of the project. I own the property that the water drains into. So my question is, what type of wall would you put between the project and my property? There's also two lots to the side of my property. And if you do build some form of wall, what accommodations would you do to keep that water flowing? When we get heavy rains, that turns into a creek. Is there anybody that can answer that question?
Oh, Patrick, we'll address these at the end. Thank you for your comment. We'll have someone speak to that. Is that, are you finished?
Yes, just the wall and the accommodations to the drain on my side of the property.
Thank you. Beth, please lower your hand. You'll have three minutes to make your comment.
My husband just said everything that needed to be said, so I'm good. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Beth.
I believe it's Liang. Please lower your hand. You'll have three minutes to make your comment.
Hi, my name is Jeff. I am the owner of the property behind, I believe it's like lot five or four, the subdivision. I also had a question concerning the swell, how they are going to ensure that the swell will not flood that area with the new construction, and how they're going to be able to properly construct where there wouldn't be any additional water. Like Patrick and Beth stated, it does become a, I would say, kind of a pond area. So that's the major concern of all the, I think, all the people that live on Rawhide. Also, with all the traffic that's being concerned that's going to be added to that roadway, how can we ensure that there won't be any hazards or possibly any issues like accidents? Because they're so close to PFE and Rawhide right there. Like you guys stated with parking and how that's already become a very narrow street with all the new construction. I don't know how they can ensure that parking will not be made on PFE Road. As of right now, those are my concerns.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Okay, it appears as though that's all the public comment. I'd like to invite Angel back to maybe address what we heard as best she can.
Sure, if I could, yeah, provide some additional information. So for the, I understand from Patrick's question, there is a question relating to the impacts that might result from the wall as it relates to the water that collects and drains on the western side of the project site. And so with that, the construction of the wall itself and any fencing, it would need to be designed to accommodate any potential runoff. There is a metal fence that would be constructed around like the open space lot area if there was any potential runoff from there. So we're not expecting any impacts that would result from that fencing. But the runoff that would collect near the wall itself, the wall will need to be designed in such a way to not increase or to address any potential runoff there. The question regarding the hazards that might occur, given, you know, increased traffic along PFE Road and accidents, the, there's no parking that would be allowed on PFE Road. along PFE Road and accidents, the, there's no parking that would be allowed on PFE Road, and so any residents or visitors that would visit the site or any of the residents there, they would be able and be required to park on the lots that they're actually visiting. So we don't have Phil chime in on the safety question in terms of the distance from the roadways there. Phil, if you can chime in on that part.
Sure, thanks, Angel. The encroachment of the onsite subdivision road onto PFE Road will be restricted to right-in, right-out access only with the construction of a raised median along PFE Road, so that should ensure that the vehicles traveling to and from the site can access PFE Road safely in that location. And then, while I still have the microphone here, I'll talk a little bit about the drainage on the west side. The project that you have in front of you is not proposing the grading of any of the lots within the subdivision. Sometimes we have subdivisions where they pad grade the lots, this is not one of those, and so the runoff from the lots themselves and where it goes is not changing with the subdivision improvements. Obviously, it will change slightly with the development of each lot and the construction of homes, and that will, you know, have a minor increase in flows. Drainage law would typically state that a downstream property owner would need to accept the flows from an upstream property in reasonable amounts, and so the way this sheds to the west, lots three, four, and five drain to the west today and will continue to drain that way after development of the property, and there may be a slight increase in flows due to the development of the parcels. When we get into the improvement plan stage and look at this a little closer with construction level detail, there is the possibility of a provision for a drainage swale to be located on the west side of the property near lots three, four, and five, that could potentially be constructed to collect any flows and convey them down to that drainage swale in the southwestern portion of the site where the majority of the flows go. I think that should answer or provide at least some more information on the topics that were raised during public comment, and I am available if there are any other questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Angel, maybe a point of clarification, I think Patrick even asked, what is the fencing that will be put on the west side? Can you clarify the exact fence that's going to be placed there?
Sure, let me pull up my exhibit real quick on the type of fence, because I don't recall offhand. We have a fencing exhibit that was provided with the application.
We have that, that's right now, Angel.
I'm sorry, could you say that?
I think we have it on the screen right now.
The landscape and street lighting, oh, okay, and that would be the color board. So on the sheet C6, the proposed landscaping and street lighting plan, we also have details on the steel fence that would be constructed around the open space lot, and so I would, it would just simply consist of a steel fence that will include a slope concrete that would allow for some draining, concrete footing, and it would be about six feet, six feet in height. So that's the fencing that's proposed on the western side of the site, adjacent to the open space areas, and that's for the purposes of protecting the drainage swale that's located there. If that helps to clarify.
Yes, I mean, typically, you know, you're going to have open type style fencing wherever you have the drainage is, just so it allows for flow through. You aren't going to see a block wall blocking a drainage or solid fence.
Okay, so it could be the cedar or the black one listed here.
Oh, it's black.
Yeah, I'd assume the wrought iron fence, not the solid wood fence would, you know, that would be an impediment to, you know, the flow.
Because it does say that's the north and west for the cedar, so maybe that's not on the west.
Can you, I'm sorry, could you repeat that last part again?
The screen.
I'm not able to see the screen that you're.
Okay, the screen we were just showing had the wooden fence, and it said on the north and the west that wooden fence will be placed.
Oh, I see, okay, so, yeah, the, for the open space parcel that is just north of lot one, down where the, yeah, where you're seeing, this is the area where the drainage swell is located, so we've got, I believe that is the
I'm out of the connection.
Six-foot fence, steel tubing, color, color in black is what I'm showing, but maybe if we can have, maybe the applicant just confirm there that I have that correct.
Yeah, that's true, so along the west side, we'll have the wood or vinyl fence, six-foot, along those three lots, three, four, and five, and then the open space will be the steel so that it does not hold back any drainage runoff, and then we'll have to have a certain space underneath the fence in the actual swell to allow the water to go through.
Thank you, that's the clarity we're looking for.
And just so the chair and the commission is aware as well, it is included in a condition of approval for the project at number 94, which is on page 38 of your packet.
All right, any other public comment? We're going to close public comment and go ahead and move to discussion with the planning commission.
So, in regards to the wall on the north and west side, the neighbors are saying that, who currently live there and own property, that that water drains to the west, which seems about right. With that wooden fence on the new subdivision side, will there be some kind of DI's or drainage that will force that water back to the south where the drainage pool is currently, according to what the neighbors are saying? Because it seems like it's turning into a stream or a small pond with that runoff. If we put the fence to impede that, is it going to fill up lots four and five and cause a problem for them? So could they put a drainage line running from north to south along the west wall to drain that water to go into lot number one, or the A, lot A, where they're going to have the runoff water all collect to?
Maybe Angel's surveying could.
Yeah, this is Phil Franz again, and that's kind of what I spoke to a little bit earlier, you know, in, a wood fence does allow some runoff to go through it in smaller quantities, and this is where I was explaining that when we get into the improvement plan level designed for this, we'll take a look at that, and the project tentative map does allow for and provide an easement to the homeowners association along that western property boundary where a swale could be constructed to collect some of that runoff from, you know, those western lots and be conveyed down towards the existing drainage swale if we think that that is necessary. Again, the runoff today flows there, I don't think just the runoff from the existing conditions, if you put a fence up there, I don't think that would be, a wooden fence, that would be significant, but we can certainly look at that during the improvement plan stages and provide for a small swale over there just to try to collect those flows and direct them down towards that existing drainage swale.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
One other comment I had, for the road, it seems like the neighbors are also concerned about parking on PFE Road and inside the subdivision. There is a minimum of 20,000 square foot on each lot, is there an improvement that could be done to widen this road and take away from some of those lots that you still will meet the requirements, but then give these residents ample parking or ease of access in and out of this narrow street?
This is Phil Franz again, I mean, I'll just speak to that. There's certainly, from our perspective, from an engineering perspective, the road could be wider to allow for parking. Many times, it's the applicant's choice to go with a smaller road, and when you go with a smaller road, we then have to restrict it for no parking. From our perspective, certainly it could be wider to provide for parking, even in just certain areas, maybe there could be some locations that that could happen. If that's something that the commission would like to do, we can certainly look to add something like that into the conditions of approval, and I don't know if planning has any other comments on that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would just add, Phil, maybe you can speak to what would be the minimum width required to have one side of street parking on that internal road, as far as width?
So I would say probably in this situation, you'd want to keep 20 feet of pavement available for two-way traffic and emergency traffic, and then eight to nine feet is generally required for a, like a parallel parking stall, so you'd be looking at somewhere around, let's just say 29 feet of pavement width to allow for parking on the street versus the 20, I believe it's 24 that's proposed right now.
So if it was widened by five or six feet, then that would give ample parking for residents?
Then that would allow for parking along one side of the road.
Okay. So is that something that we can ask for or require, or?
Certainly, you know, you may want to ask input on the, from the developer, but certainly the commission could add that condition.
Okay. So is the developer still here?
Yes.
So is that something you guys would be willing to do for this roadway and to widen it to give ample parking for guests of residents there and not be forced onto PFE Road where maybe the county or somebody else is going to have to go enforce no parking and?
Yeah, I think that's possible, that's possible to go ahead and do that. We consider it similar to most of your rural roads, just like Rawhide, I don't believe is any more than the 24 feet wide right now, is not set up for parking either, so when we designed it, that's what we took into consideration, but it's not a bad idea to make it six feet wider and add some parking. We probably did, put the parking along where the sidewalk's going to be, so it'd be on the east side of the road.
So there's only going to be a sidewalk on one side of that road, not on both sides?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Yeah, that's the only thing I'd like to see changed on there, is so residents have the option to have people parking in front of their house and not force them to go park on the PFE Road, so.
Chair, can you put the motions back up?
Any other discussion thoughts from each other, moved to a motion, or?
Ready to go for motions. So I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the PFE Ranch subdivision supported by the findings contained in the staff report.
I'll second that. All right, first and a second, do a roll call vote.
First for Mr. Haugie, a second from Mr. DiMattei, a vote for Mr. DiMattei, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Hersag.
Yes.
Mr. Haugie.
Yes.
Thank you.
Chair, I have one question, can we, on the second one or one of these, add that they'd like to see that improvement of that road to be widened, or is that something that will come when they go to?
No, I think we can make the motion now.
Yes, so.
Can it be added to one of these?
If there is an interest in widening it, that would be included with a modified condition of approval for both the tentative subdivision map and the conditional use permit, so both number two and number three on the recommendation. And it looks like we'd be modifying condition number 30, but if the commission would be okay with it, I would like just a minute to talk to the planning director and figure out how we would modify that condition to deal with your interests.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So I'll make a motion to approve the tentative subdivision map for the PFE Ranch subdivision to allow for the subdivision of parcel to create 10 lots subject to the conditions of approval, found in attachment D and supported by the findings contained in the staff report, and to modify condition 30 or the appropriate condition to widen the eastern side of the road an additional six feet for parking.
If the chair is okay with it, if it's okay with the commission too, we'd like to get the commission, the condition drafted beforehand, and then you're all fully aware of what you would be approving.
Okay, how about we take a two-minute, five-minute, let's take a five-minute break, and we'll come back, give you guys time to do that. Let's take a five-minute break, we'll be back. What is that?
You gavel.
Okay, 11:13, we'll start up again. All right, it's 11:13, I was told by my predecessor to use a gavel, so we're back in session, and we'll go ahead and move to, EJ, you have, or Clayton, are you in?
Yes, so, we took a look at a modification of condition of approval number 30, and the requested modification in line with Commissioner DiMattei's request would be to add at the end of it, to remove the period and then add a comma, and then the following language, "And the roadway shall be at least 29 feet, comma, or as approved by ESD, comma, to allow a minimum one side of street parking."
Are you pleased with that?
Yes, I'm pleased with that, so that's part of the motion.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes, yeah, Angel, please.
My apologies, I wish I was there in person. In talking with Phil, and Phil, feel free to chime in if you'd like, but if we could also add plate 104 Land Development Manual standard with a 30-foot of pavement width to allow for on-street parking on the side of the road?
Yeah, Angel, the plate reference is already in the condition, they were just pending to the end of it.
Okay, all right, thank you, just wanted to make sure that was in there.
Inside of 29 feet.
And 30 was mentioned earlier, so 29 or 30?
I would prefer 30.
It's okay.
Okay, so, as modified, the condition would be, comma, "And the roadway shall be at least 30 feet in width, comma, or as approved by ESD, comma, to allow a minimum one side of street parking," period.
Okay. So do I need to make a motion again, or restate the motion, which I will, so I move to approve the tentative subdivision map for the PFE Ranch subdivision to allow for the subdivision of a parcel to create 10 lots subject to the modified conditions of approval, specifically modification of condition 30, found in attachment D and supported by the findings contained in the staff report.
Would you like to read that modification again, so it's all one statement?
And the modification would be at the end of condition of approval number 30, it would delete the period and add a comma and then state the following language, "And the roadway shall be at least 30 feet in width, comma, or as approved by ESD, comma, to allow a minimum one side of street parking," period.
Agreed. Thank you.
I second that.
First and a second, let's do a roll call vote.
I have a first from Mr. Haugie, a second from Mr. DiMattei, so a vote for Mr. DiMattei, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Hersag.
Yes.
Mr. Haugie.
Yes.
Thank you.
I move to approve the conditional use permit to allow for the development of a 10-lot, single-family residential subdivision subject to the modified conditions of approval. single-family residential subdivision subject to the modified conditions of approval, specifically condition number 30, found in attachment D and supported by the findings contained within the staff report.
I'll second that.
First and the second, roll call.
I have a first from Mr. Haugie, a second from Mr. DiMattei, so a vote for Mr. DiMattei, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Hersag.
Yes.
Mr. Haugie.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so the decision of the Planning Commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided comment, or anyone that submitted written comments on this item, and appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of $641. All right, we're going to move on to our second timed item, the Planning Commission at-large member zoning text amendment. Members of the public may now raise their hands, press star nine if you're calling in to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. First, we'll hear from George, our planning manager, so welcome, George.
Sorry.
That's okay.
All right.
You're good.
Thank you, it's nice to be before you today. So, before you is a zoning text amendment to modify the at-large Planning Commission section with regard to selection of those commissioners. Currently, we have two at-large commissioners with one residing full-time east of the Sierra Crest and one residing west of the Sierra Crest. Currently, in the ordinance, the at-large commissioners must reside full-time in the western part of the county or full-time in the eastern part of the county. The issue that needed, that necessitated in the amendment is the small amount of full-time residents in the eastern part of the county. There's 405, 306 residents in all of Placer County. Only 13,837 live east of the Sierra Crest. So, the thought was to increase the pool of candidates for the at-large position east of the Sierra Crest would be to allow them to reside part-time in the eastern part of the county. And as part of this amendment, we also changed the western side to be part-time. The concern was that the chance that we would be able to find someone like Larry Sevenson is low. I mean, it would be great if the board could find someone like that, but the chances are very low, so they wanted to make sure that they had the biggest possible pool of candidates. So I did go to the Granite Bay MAC, and I did go to a Tahoe Town Hall with regard to this item. The Granite Bay MAC comment was that they understood that they wanted, they understood the need to increase the pool of candidates in the eastern part of the county, but they thought that only the eastern part should have the caveat that they reside part-time, and that the western part, the western district, should reside full-time in that area. We aren't proposing that, but the Granite Bay MAC did make that comment. The other comments that I got had concerns about residency. Our ordinance is silent on what constitutes part-time or full-time residency. It just says residence, and it does say that for regular commissioners as well. I would tell you that, in the past, the decision about residency, what makes full-time residency or part-time residency, has been left up to the board when they go through their appointment process. So, with that, I don't have any other issues unless you have any questions for me.
I guess I have a question on the temporary, so it means somebody could live in the western, I'm sorry, say could live in District 5, western side of the crest, but would have to have a cabin or something over on the eastern side to fulfill that position.
You mean, is that what's proposed now?
Correct.
No.
No.
No. It's just that it could, I mean, technically, the way it is proposed, someone could, if the board chose to, if someone lived in Tahoe six months of the year, and lived in Walnut Creek six months of the year, they could choose to do that. Would they choose to do that? That's their prerogative.
I'm thinking they have more, somebody living in western Placer County.
It would seem like it would be someone who probably lives in western part of the county and has a secondary house in the eastern part. That would, that, that I think is the most logical thing, but I would not second-guess the board on how they choose to look at residency.
If I could just add a bit to that definition of residency, it ends up being somewhat of a complicated topic that turns on domicile and intent, where you intend to live, where your family lives. In general, the way the county handles it, I think historically, has been how they list their residents on their affidavit of voter registration, that's usually what we go to. But there is some elections code sections that get into more detail about it, but it is somewhat of a complicated topic. The code section as worded and as would be amended does require that both at-large members be residents of the county. Yeah, full-time, and it says full-time. Well, the existing code says shall be residents of the county. Well, your comment made me think, because on page three of four on the staff report, right under item D, the very last line of that full paragraph, the paragraph starts with "The proposed zoning text amendment will allow one at-large," but go to the very last line, it says, "All commissioners must reside on a full-time basis within the county." And so, when I read that, it made me think something different than what was just presented.
I'm sorry, where did you say you saw that, Mr. Hersag?
Page three, and you see item D at the top?
Yes.
So the paragraph right after that starts with "The proposed zoning text amendment," at the very last line indicates that full-time residency is required in Placer County. Is that it? That's part of the staff report, which is explaining the code section, you would, I guess, go back to the code section to look at the exact wording, and that's the portion in italics on page two, that just says that large member shall be residents of the county. I think the inference in that residence is that if they're going to be part-time somewhere, the rest of that part will be still within the county. Yeah.
So it's to the understanding that no matter where you live, on east or west side of the mountains there, you have to reside full-time in Placer County?
Right.
Correct?
Right, and I would say, the issue that comes with this is, it's equally hard to define full-time and part-time.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Isn't it considered your primary residence? So, shouldn't, if their primary residence is, say, in Roseville, but they have a cabin in Tahoe, Tahoe City, and they can use it as their part-time residence, but their official residence is in Roseville, for example, not Walnut Creek?
The term residence is defined, and that's supposed to be your domicile, which would be the place where your habitation is fixed, where you have the intention of remaining, and whenever you're absent, the person has the intention of returning. And each person can only have one domicile, so that's the definition of residence.
Gotcha.
And you could be renting. Right. So you don't have to have, you don't have to have ownership. But I guess what I'm trying to get at is, we're, we're not, is it an option for someone to spend a month in the east side but live in the Bay Area? Well, so, in that instance, they wouldn't be residents within the county? Because that would be their, the place where they intend on remaining is, is in the Bay Area.
Okay.
And I guess my question was, what if somebody lived just on the other side of the crest, up, you know, near Donner Summit, someplace like that? Unless they also have a part-time residence in Tahoe, they couldn't be this member, correct?
That is correct. The way it's worded, you'd have to be east of the Sierra Crest.
Okay. Okay.
So basically, I guess what I'm hearing is, if you own property in, on the east side, but reside in the west side, you would qualify, right?
If you're a resident of the county. If you own property, that would be.
If you own property in Tahoe and a resident of Placer County.
Right, so part-time isn't defined, so, yeah, I mean, that could be a week, that could be a month, as long as you are residing there for some minor portion.
You're right. But it doesn't say if you're there at a hotel for a week, or?
So I guess the thing I, the thing that I would tell you is that, the discussion that you're having is the same discussion that the board would have. I mean, ultimately, the board, it's up to the board to decide what they consider to be part-time residency. I have heard several board members say that, you know, where are you registered to vote, where's your main address, all those sorts of things, but I think that would be a discussion. I don't think the intent is really to find someone, I think the intent is to widen the pool, but to find someone who is, in fact, connected to that area, in a very, you know, real way. I think that the fear is that you won't find someone as connected as a Larry Sevenson, but you might find someone who, you know, maybe they do, are up there nine or 10 months a year, or maybe they're up there eight months a year. So, I think the board just wants the option to look at all of those things, not necessarily that they're going to do that.
Makes sense, okay. And this came from the board, correct? This is their direction just now?
Yes, this was, we're requested to do this by the past chairman of the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah.
Well, I think, you know, I've heard definitely that there's a need to broaden the pool of people up in the east side, so, me, it makes sense. I guess the west side, we're going to have plenty of candidates all the time, anyway, but, you know, to make it even, so it matches both sides, that makes sense, too.
Right, but they'll keep the west side the way it is, you have to live in the west side, in Placer County.
Well, you have to live in Placer County, and have a residence, I guess, in the west side.
Makes sense.
But, you know, I mean, somebody that lives in Tahoe and has a residence in Auburn, too, could qualify for the west side.
That's true.
Exactly.
And could you go over again the MAC recommendations? I think one was you had to be in District 5, and I'm just wondering, in 10 years, when District 5, do you have to change?
The code.
So, right now, I think, I can't recall.
I think the MAC discussed that.
Okay.
Let me see, I don't think they actually made that.
Oh, okay, I thought, I read that they did make that recommendation.
If I could, I don't have that, do you have the MAC?
I've got it here.
Did they make the District 5 recommendation?
Yeah, the Granite Bay MAC, the section A that they're requesting would be that the member at large representing the area of the county east of the Sierra Crest must be a full-time resident of Placer County, and must be at least a part-time resident of the fifth supervisory district, oh, east of the Sierra Crest, so.
Right.
I guess they do limit it to east of the Sierra Crest, but identify the fifth district.
That is not what we're recommending, but that is, that is what the Granite Bay MAC thought was appropriate.
Okay.
I guess, the number B there that talks about the west is, is not in our staff report. Okay, and not included that way.
Well, say that again, I'm sorry.
Well, in the Granite Bay MAC, they say a member at large representing county west of the Sierra Crest must be a full-time resident of Placer County west of the Sierra Crest, and that's not what we're talking about.
No, that's, that was a recommendation that the MAC made.
Right.
Both, this says reside part-time, for west or east, to make it consistent.
Both the same.
Yes, same.
Well, are we to the point where we're ready to make a motion?
Yeah, yeah.
Prior to a motion, we wouldn't take any public.
What does our motion say?
Oh, yeah, we need to, we need to take some public comment, actually.
Oh, yeah, public comment.
Let's go ahead and, we don't have any, we are the applicant, so we'll move to public comment.
Megan, please, unmute your mic, you'll have three minutes to make your comment.
Thank you. My name is Megan Chilini, I've served on seat one of the North Tahoe's Regional Advisory Council for the past 14 years. This ZTA was presented at the Eastern County Town Hall meeting last Thursday evening. I received the full ZTA on Monday from the county. Since that time, as I would before any net wrap meeting, I telephoned George with questions, then reached out to my neighbors and friends in the North Shore community to gather their thoughts. Here are four of the comments and insights from those email and telephone conversations. One, residency. The change to a part-time residency is not well-received. Overwhelmingly, residents want the at-large commissioner to be a full-time resident. The general feeling is that a part-time resident, particularly from an incorporated urban area, simply does not adequately represent the community. It erodes the representation and dilutes Tahoe's voting power. Number two, question was, are there prerequisites or requirements for a planning commissioner? Number three, what is the public outreach for this planning commissioner seat? A ZTA seems to be a stronger-than-necessary tool to obtain potential candidates in a population of 13,000. And four, and most importantly, the feedback, there are already qualified candidates existing in the Tahoe Basin, among them current and former members of the Tahoe Basin Design Review Committee, North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council, Olympic Valley MAC, Donner Summit MAC, Tahoe City PUD, North Tahoe PUD, numerous HOAs, as well as the candidates from the leadership programs that were sponsored by the Resort Association. A robust public outreach should begin to the already many members serving in appointed or elected seats in the county's east side and Tahoe's north shore. We need a strong commissioner that will augment all of your efforts and properly represent our residents and businesses. I thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Is that it? Okay, we're going to close public comment. I think, given opportunity for George to address maybe what was stated. I did talk to Mrs. Chilini, we had a discussion about it. I told her that I thought that this was just to widen the pool of candidates, and the intent was not to appoint someone who resides, that was not what they were looking at, that I am sure that they would, they would give weighted preference to someone who lives there full-time, who understands how TRPA works and all that sort of thing, you know, they would be a better qualified candidate. So I had that discussion with her. I don't think, I don't think the ZTA is a way of advertising it to get a commissioner. Staff has no input with regard to planning commissioners who are selected, that is done by the Board of Supervisors. How a supervisor wants to go about recruiting a commissioner is up to them, we have nothing to do with that, we don't make recommendations, we're not usually asked for recommendations about commissioners. Was there anything else that I missed there? She had, I think I covered most of it, other than, I understand that it was not well-received. I don't have the response to that.
She asked the requirements of a planning commissioner, and basically, based on section 1760040 in the county code, the requirements is just what we're talking about, where you reside in the county.
Yeah, right.
Nothing beyond that.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. I want to bring it to my commissioners for discussion before a motion's made, maybe discuss some of the issues that were brought up, or a motion, if that's necessary.
I'd like to maybe affirm what George is saying here, because I guess I am one of these peoples, and at least the process that I remember is, you make an application, and and then the board, on whole, will make a decision on the new planning commissioner. And so, like George is saying, you know, if somebody comes in from Tahoe and is a strong candidate, then the board, I mean, likely is going to select that candidate, so, at any rate, I think there's a concern in the east side, like you say, the population up there is not great, and there may be a time where they need to get more applicants or an applicant, and so it provides some flexibility. So with that, you know, I'd be willing to make a motion.
Any, any other comments?
I greatly respect Megan's comments, and I see where she's coming from, because, you know, if I lived in that area, I'd really want somebody who represented me, who was there more full-time and had, you know, involvement in TRPA and all that. But this is probably something that may, doesn't probably have to be changed now, but maybe in the future, as these residents who she's announced that are involved in all these meetings, you know, not knowing their age demographics, as people may age out of there, and more and more people may just live there part-time, in the future, this may have to happen, where you widen the pool. Does it have to be widened now? Maybe not, but I kind of respect what she has to say about that.
I just wanted to note that as part of the selection process that Lisa and I went through, is how to fill out an application, and then I was interviewed three times, a lengthy discussion before the board decided to appoint me, so it is up to the Board of Supervisors, and at least my experience was, there was a little bit of discussion before, you know, an appointment was made. And I do understand there are people who don't want to spend the time committing to this, I, I do understand that, so I could see if somebody is committed to the Tahoe Basin, but possibly resides on the western slope, it opens a pool, and I think, as noted, it's up to the board, and the board, you know, is going to be paying attention to their constituents, so my guess is, they are going to be looking for somebody who has good knowledge about the Tahoe Basin and its uniqueness.
You know, I also have concerns about the part-time ambiguity that exists within, you know, the, these text amendments, and I hope that the Board of Supervisors are able to bring some clarity to what that means. I would understand why, certainly, people are concerned in the Tahoe area about the language change. I do also understand the need to increase the pool, and hopefully, that's motivating to people in the Tahoe area to apply. We want representation, we want people from the diversity of the community in Placer County to be represented on here. It's set the request to the board for this broadening of the pool, so I'd encourage everyone, if you have an interest, to do the work that we do, which is quite extensive, and to understand what it is, to commit to that and apply for it. But, it's kind of my thoughts.
Okay, so, so I would make the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, they apply the amendments to the Placer County Code, chapter seventeen, article seventeen, point six oh, section seventeen, point six oh, point zero four zero, A two, related to at-large members of the planning commission, our example from environmental review under the sequel guidelines, section fifteen oh, zero six one, B and three, because it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility to proceed amendment with, have, will have any significant effect on the environment.
I'll second that.
First and the second, let's do a roll call vote.
I have a first from Mr. Johnson, a second from Mr. DiMattei, so a vote for Mr. DiMattei, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Hersag?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, then I further would recommend to the Board of Supervisors, they don't advertise to amend the Placer County Code, chapter seventeen, article seventeen point six oh, section seventeen point six oh, point zero four oh, A two, related to the at-large members of the planning commission that set forth in the fourth amendment, in the fourth, set forth in amendment B and supported by the findings contained in the staff report.
Second that.
First and the second, let's do a roll call vote.
First from Mr. Johnson, a second from Mr. DiMattei, so a vote for Mr. DiMattei.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Hersag?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that's our last timed item. I just want to also make a comment that, I know the Board of Supervisors has, has a challenge of finding a replacement for at-large member, and we look forward to receiving that person, good luck with that process, and, and thank you for your time today. That wraps up our meeting, we're adjourned.